Oh, I have Ms. Evans in the back. Ms. Strauss, Ms. Kies-Gamar, Ms. Schultz, Ms. McLaughlin, Mr. Moon, and Ms. Corbett Sanders. Those opposed, those abstaining, Ms. Hines, that motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, as I mentioned, you have a motion. Oh, no, we're not.
We're doing that.
We're doing the motions at the end because we have to go back in. If you would like to, go ahead. Ms., I call on Ms. Schultz for a motion.
Yeah, just because we have the motion ready. Madam Chair, I move that the school board authorize legal counsel to settle the case of Gobagi versus school board according to the terms and conditions discussed in closed session.
Seconded by Mr. Moon. All those in favor? Ms. Strauss, Ms. Kies-Gamar, Ms. Schultz, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Evans, Mr. Moon, Ms. Corbett Sanders, those opposed, those abstaining, Ms. Hines, that motion carries. The remainder of the actions will be read out after we go back in to close, certify after that portion of the meeting and come back and we will make those motions. With that, I turn the meeting over to our meeting managers for the strategic plan Goal Three report, and our meeting managers are Ms. Kies-Gamar and Ms. Schultz.
Thank you, everyone. We are going to get right to it so we can be efficient with our time on our report for the premier workforce.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Helen Nixon, and I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources. And this evening, I am joined by Sean McDonald, our Director of Talent Acquisition Management, and to my left, Michael Drager, Director of HR Business Services. We are also joined by a number of our HR staff members who are sitting in the back. Very grateful for your attendance with us this evening. Thank you. We are looking forward to having our work session discussion around Goal Three, premier workforce. On December 5th, we shared the goal report with the school board, and at the conclusion of that meeting, my team and I were asked several questions. In preparation for this evening, we have used those questions posed to us at the school board meeting as a roadmap for our discussion tonight. And also, Mr. Moon, my team and I continue to work on providing written responses to the additional questions that were sent to us on the 12th. So, FCPS as leader in market compensation. The slide here is an overall comparison of our starting teacher pay with that of our neighboring school districts. And one of the questions that we were asked was to look at the market compensation. We talked about having reached our goal recently, having the scales brought to within 95% to 105% of market. And this is the latest comparison of our starting salary with that of our neighboring
I would just plan at this point to go through all of the responses to the prompts that were received either through the board meeting itself or follow-on submissions that you got as we prepared, and then we'll go to the end, and then we'll get questions. We'll engage in the conversation at the board table.
And I might add, so there are a variety of supporting documents for the presentation today, and while we're not going to go through in a linear fashion to answer those questions, all of those questions are answered into tonight's presentation. So if you're following along on paper, it's a little bit out of order, but we are going to address all of the questions that are part of the supporting documents.
So we have often been asked to speak about our recruiting practices, as well as those best practices that research supports. Displayed here is a comprehensive list of those practices. While we do not engage in all of these, we aspire to do so. For example, loan forgiveness and residency programs would be two areas that we would hope to expand and include in our FCPS strategies. Our board, with your efforts over the last few years to secure pay increases for teachers, has been a huge win for the division. Other areas we could consider include boost step increases for teachers earlier in their career, and we could also consider offering targeted compensation for working in a high need field or school, offer subsidies for childcare, housing, and licensure assessments. Incorporating these strategies would demonstrate a significant commitment to our teacher workforce. Currently, teachers of color are two to three times more likely to be concentrated in high poverty, high minority, urban, public schools with the most challenging working conditions, which is likely the reason there are higher rates of turnover when compared to their white colleagues. Despite this diverse student population, Latino, Black, Asian, and Native American teachers comprise only 17.3% of all teachers, and we are mindful of these challenges and continue to work to address them through our recruiting efforts. Retaining teachers of color, best practices. Specific strategies for retaining teachers of color include the following: supportive teacher prep programs. We know that a high percentage of teachers of color who come through the certification process come through alternative pathways, and because of these alternative pathways, they may not have the same access to a rigorous student teaching experience. Attention to improved resources, ensuring that all teachers have access to the important resources they need. Teacher autonomy. Some research shows that teachers who might be the only Black teacher in their building sometimes have default roles in that building. For example, they might be relegated to being the disciplinarian, to being the one person in the building who is going to deal with certain disciplinary issues. And sometimes, the experience for Latino teachers has been that they then become the school's interpreter. And sometimes, the stress of those different kinds of roles impacts retention. Focus groups. It's very important to offer teachers of color an opportunity to offer feedback on their experiences, and that is one of the strategies that our own Talent Acquisition Management Group has really invested time and effort in figuring out the best ways to create focus groups and to also bring together alumni of other colleges and universities to be partners with us when we're on the road recruiting. We want to make sure that we fortify our colleague assistance program, which means we want to ensure that we have great mentorship and teacher coaching. And licensure. We have greater flexibility in the licensure over the past two legislative cycles, and FCPS is exercising that flexibility being granted to teachers. Oh, excuse me. And improved administrative leadership. Some of the research has also shown that principals sometimes need guidance and support in having conversations with teachers about instruction and about improved pedagogy and processes. And we want to make sure that we have opportunities for our principals to have the professional development they need to be great instructional leaders in the building. We were asked to provide demographic data for Teachers for Tomorrow, and that is Attachment 51% of our T4T students are students of color pursuing a possible career in teaching, and we do need to do a better job recruiting males into this program. And I'm going to ask Mr. McDonald, excuse me? No. I don't know if it can be. It's posted to the documents, but I don't know if... Right.
So I just want to point out on here, we have two different programs represented. We have our Early Childhood Program as well as our Teachers for Tomorrow Program. And we spent a lot of time focused around conversations related to Teachers for Tomorrow, but there is this other program out there that is in eight of our schools that also is preparing young folks for the teaching profession. And so our team has become much more involved with working with the folks in the College Counseling and Career Readiness Office around this program and ensuring there's visibility on the part of our office in those programs, so we're beginning to develop those relationships with those students. The programs are very similar. The one major difference between the Early Childhood Program and the Teachers for Tomorrow Program is the fact that the Early Childhood Program focuses on that pre-K to grade three band, whereas the Teachers for Tomorrow Program focuses on that K-12 spectrum. So that's the main difference. And the other difference is there is an opportunity for dual enrollment in both of the programs. The dual enrollment partner for the Early Childhood Program is Nova, whereas the dual enrollment partner for the Teachers for Tomorrow Program is Shenandoah University.
Diverse panels. We do not have a centralized hiring process. Human Resources provides guidance to administrative hiring teams at the school site on best practices in hiring. When looking at teacher hiring specifically, FCPS established and implemented a teacher hiring practices framework leading up to the 2018-2019 school year. This framework was reviewed by an independent consultant, and school administrative teams were trained on how to incorporate the framework in their interview practices. Generally, school administrative teams enlist staff to serve on an interview panel to meet with applicants, complying with FCPS recommended practice. However, given the dearth of available candidates and considering a variety of other factors such as proximity to the start of the school year or unavailability of staff over the summer months, a member of a school administrative team may serve as a sole interviewer, although, again, we do highly recommend an interview panel. Our HR office will be a featured guest at the All County Principal Meeting in January, where our focus will be best practices in hiring. Additionally, we are using as our foundational text the book called Understanding Bias. In this way, we will work with principals in understanding some of the nuances of hiring with an equity lens and an awareness of unconscious bias that exists in the hiring process. We were asked to provide the number of FCPS student teachers. Most recently, 2019-2020, we had 282. Over the past four years, FCPS has hired 58% of our student teachers. Our student teachers are invited to the February Job Fair, where they have an opportunity to receive an employment offer for the upcoming school year. Our most successful partnership is with GMU, as the students enrolled in that professional development schools program spend the entire school year working side by side with an FCPS mentor. Since 2010, 73% of participants have accepted teaching positions with FCPS. The success rate of the residency programs that allows student teachers to have an immersive experience in the classroom for an entire academic year and offers a stipend serve
This slide illustrates the compares the number of teacher applicants over time versus the number of vacancies that FCPS has had. So that yellow line on the bottom of the graph is the pretty constant and consistent illustration of the need. So on average, we're hiring somewhere around 2,000 teachers per school year. That blue line on the top of the graph indicates the number of applicants we've had over the years, and as you can see, there is a downward slope going back to 2012-2013. This is very likely an outgrowth of the nationwide shortage of teachers, and we are seeing and feeling that very much so here in Fairfax. And again, downward slope while our need is level.
The need for residency programs is a way to really fortify the way in which we are recruiting and retaining teachers. As we mentioned earlier, the quality of the teacher prep program and the way that the individual teacher is ready to take on the role of teacher of record is really critical, and the teacher prep work that occurs is vital. Residency programs are partnerships between districts and universities that subsidize and improve teacher training to teach in high need schools and in high demand subject areas. There are at least 50 residency programs currently operating around the country. Resident teachers receive financial support, often in the form of a stipend and tuition assistance. They commit to teaching an additional three to four years in their district with ongoing mentoring support. Residents have an immersive experience and understand the school culture, and 49% of teachers enrolled in residency programs are teachers of color. We would also, if we would move in the direction of trying to incorporate residency, more residency programs into FCPS, we really do need advocacy at the state level. Many of the most successful programs in North Carolina, Minnesota, and California, they do have money that's invested by the state, not only supporting the student-teacher, but also finding ways to compensate the mentor teachers as well. And I've included here some of the most successful residency programs. The Boston Teacher Residency Program, 50% of their cohort, their current cohort, are people of color, and in 2015, the Boston Teacher Residency graduates were twice as likely to be rated as exemplary than other Massachusetts teachers. The San Francisco Residency Teacher Program, after five years, 80% of SFR graduates are still teaching in San Francisco compared to 38% of beginning teachers hired by the Unified District who came in from traditional teacher programs. And when I found the North Carolina Teacher Residency Program for North Carolina A&amp;T, what was really fabulous about this particular program is they do support the students with a $20,000 a year stipend that goes toward their tuition. And again, it's a combination of a successful partnership with the university, but it's also making sure that you have state funding as well to not only start these programs, but to sustain them over time even when the economy is difficult. And North Carolina is a really good example of that because the North Carolina Teaching Fellows Program, which was one of the models for the country, stopped for a while because of financial burdens, but realized how important it was to the state and did all that they could in 2015 to revitalize that program, and it's been going ever since. Okay. We were asked to provide some data on teacher preparation programs by race and gender in the United States, and the most recent data available from the U.S. Department of Education indicates during the 2016-17 academic year, education degrees were conferred for individuals enrolled in a college/university as follows. Hispanic was 10% of graduates from a teacher prep program. American Indian or Alaskan Native was roughly less than 1%. Asian was 3% graduated from teacher prep. Black was 10%. Native Hawaiian or Pacific Islander, less than 1%. White, 72%, and two or more races, 2%. Non-resident alien, 2%, and that would account for teachers in this country who are either on a J1 or H1 visa. We were also asked to pull data for the teacher preparation enrollment by race and gender in Virginia, and data from the U.S. Department of Education Title II database indicates in 2016-17, Virginia had a total of 7,304 individuals enrolled in education prep, a decrease of 2,902 from the previous year. Hispanic was 4% of the teacher prep in Virginia. American Indian or Alaskan Native, less than 1%. Asian, 3%. Black, 16%. Native Hawaiian or Pacific Islander, less than 1%. And white, 71%. Two or more races, 4%. As you can see on this slide, for workforce from 1987 to 2015, looking at the trend data here, there's been a decline in white teachers in the profession and a very small uptick in teachers of color. Trying to narrow those scales here. And so this gives you just an indication of where you can see the white decline just a bit, but we're seeing in teachers of color a slight uptick, and that's where we know we have to do our concentrated efforts. Oh, sorry. I went too fast, sorry. We were asked for offers made and declined by race and gender. Is this large enough? Is it any way to get it a little bigger, Anne? Of the 325 in total candidates who declined an offer, 3% indicated salary as the reason, and 13% indicated employment with another Virginia school division. We had 30 Black applicants who declined a position with FCPS, 19 Asian applicants declined a position, and 20 Hispanic or Latino applicants declined a position with FCPS.
So we were asked to provide an update on where we're at with Trades for Tomorrow, which is a vision that has received some action and attention, to build a program that will grow individuals to take on trade positions as they become available here in FCPS. So we were lucky to bring onboard in mid-October Ashley Hicks in our TAM office, who is spearheading the coordination and the collaboration, and Ashley's back there. Ashley. We were very lucky to steal her away from Loudoun County Public Schools, so we welcome Ashley to our team. But Ashley's been spearheading the collaborative effort alongside the Office of College Counseling and Career Readiness and our Facilities Office to ensure that we're designing a program to meet the needs of the organization and reaching as many students as we possibly can. As part of her entry, Ashley met with those stakeholder groups that I mentioned, as well as made visits to schools that had existing academy programs to meet with students. Currently, we have eight students who are enrolled in our youth registered apprenticeship, spanning a variety of areas such as HVAC, electrical, and auto tech collision. The plan is to expand the youth registered apprenticeship program through securing additional funds. We're exploring, currently looking at grant and scholarship opportunities for funding. The collaborative team is exploring potential grant funding through Fast Forward Virginia Grant Program and the Department of Labor's and Industries' Grant Opportunities. Development of a presentation is also underway that can be delivered to students in schools to really provide exposure and information to excite them about these opportunities and get them engaged.
And I just wanted to add that I was able to tour with our Director of Facilities and Maintenance this past week, all of our satellite sites, and was able to meet a couple of our Trades for Tomorrow students, and they were doing some fabulous work. Very excited to be part of the program, very excited to have that hands-on approach to the work. And in talking with some of the coordinators in the shops and offices, they would like to be able to offer those individuals positions. It's an issue of having the vacancies to do that, but everyone is very, very happy with the program.
If I could just say, Marty shared that with me last week. This week, today, I was over at the Edison Center. We've highlighted for a school visit to really be for our support employees, highlighting the work they do and the interactions that they're having with some of these kids in Trades for Tomorrow. And it's re-exciting and renewing their work to be a chance to be a mentor for these kids. And the kids have said, "The moment I got the offer to be a part of this, I doubled down on my schoolwork. I got the connection between finishing my work and the work, my classwork, and the work I'm getting to do for the Trades for Tomorrow." So it was a great, and it will be a January school visit video that we'll be sharing out with those kids' stories and the employees that support them.
And here, we have a 17-year-old electrical wizard in the school system, and she is phenomenal. And they're trying to get her into the program, so.
So our HR team is currently pulling together data for retention statistics by school, and that will be available for our school board as part of a follow-on. So our team is still compiling all of that. One of the questions to address was making sure that HR continues to support retention efforts, and as we shared, that we want to make certain that we have effective and efficient onboarding experiences, that we continue to work with our partners in OPLFE and Kathleen Walts and her team to support Great Beginnings and Participation. Our comprehensive benefit programs for our employees and their families, our wellness programs, our recognition programs, and of course, when we are able to say formally and informally "thank you" to our employees for a job well done, and kind of our end-of-the-year celebration when we do our event at GMU, those kinds of events that highlight and showcase the best of the best. And of course, climate and engagement surveys, and making sure that those are being deployed appropriately and making certain that we are providing data and reporting to our schools for the important information that they need to be able to have coaching conversations with their principals and looking at how this data supports their school improvement processes. And overall, the last two years, the Human Resources Advisory Committee has examined retention as a theme, and while our overall retention rate for teachers is 94%, well above the 85% national average, we do know that we have areas that we want to make certain that we are addressing where we do have high turnover rates in some areas more than others. And as we look forward to future Goal Three reports, we mentioned on Thursday, on December 5th, that we will have opportunities in the future to reexamine the metrics to make sure these are still the metrics that we want to be looking at, and if they need to be refined, how should they be refined? And those are things that we will be looking at and examining in the spring. Attachment A. So Mr. Drager is going to speak to this. Lots of data on this, lots to digest in these, and so you may need more than the time that you're going to have this evening, but one of the questions that we had on the 5th was, can we break down the retention data in a variety of ways? And this is what this chart does, and Mr. Drager is going to take us through a very high level. And again, there is a lot here, so as you take this back and as you read it and have other questions, please make sure that you email them to us.
Sure. So this attachment does provide retention data over the past four years broken down by demographic subgroups under three employee categories: teachers, school-based administrators, and operational personnel. So what you see is the four years for teachers, four years for school-based administrators, and four years for operational personnel. The data is also what's been used in the Equity Profile and provides the percentage of retained employees after separations and retirements. The overall retention rates for each employee category have remained The overall retention rates for each employee category have remained relatively stable over the past four years. Over that time, the average retention rates have been 91% for teachers, 93.1% for school-based administrators, and 91% for operational personnel. For the most recent year, reporting year 2018-2019, the Asian subgroup had the highest retention rate within each employee category: 94.3% of Asian teachers, 100% of Asian school-based administrators, and 93.5% of operational personnel were retained. For the recent reporting period of 2018-19, the two-or-more-racist subgroup had the lower retention rates for teachers and operational personnel. 89% of teachers and 87.2% of operational personnel of two-or-more races were retained. And additionally, school-based administrator group with the lowest retention rate in 2018-19 was the Hispanic or Latino group with a retention rate of 90.5%.
Mr. Drager, do you want them to move the slide to match the year you're looking at? I think you're on 1617 and 1516.
So page one, it's kind of spread out because of the way it's done by teacher, school-based administrator.
Okay.
Page one has the recent year for teachers, page three has the recent year for school-based administrators, and page six has the recent year for operational personnel. So it does, sorry, my summary does jump around a little bit, but one of the highlight those points for the group.
This was attachment A, as you look for it. The shortages of special education teacher highlights. Special education teachers continue to be a critical need for FCPS. Special education has topped the VDOE Critical Fields List since 2006. The FCPS recruitment strategy has a multifaceted approach with a focus on year-round hiring. Special education has been listed as a critical field on the VDOE Critical Field List since 2006. We consistently need approximately 400 special education teachers per year. From the National Lens, the 2018-19 American Association for Employment in Education/Educator Supply and Demand Report, all areas of special education are noted as a considerable shortage, most extreme rating on their scale. We have seen a flip in the number of professionally licensed versus provisionally licensed teachers. Our focused recruiting efforts have helped to turn the tide on provisional hires, and the work that we have done with our COVE program supporting the IA pathway from IA to special education teacher, continued investment in programs like that are helping to make certain that we are filling those needs, and our hope is to grow and expand that. We were asked to do some benchmarking with our neighboring divisions in terms of recruiting and hiring positions hired and vacancies on the opening day of school. These are our WABE partner schools, if you will. Where you see the designation of PR pending reporting, they have not gotten back, they have not all responded to all of our questions. So we are going to continue to populate this chart and keep you posted on this, but this gives a sense of the vacancies, the teacher vacancies on the opening day of school versus the total number of positions that were hired for FY '20. And Fairfax is still hiring the most. Surrounding school divisions report special education teachers and elementary teachers as the top critical needs area. As we've said, we've topped, the special ed has topped the VDOE Critical Field List, and similar to FCPS, both Loudoun and Prince William reported declines in the number of teacher applicants over the past five years, and have reported an increase in hiring of candidates who have not completed traditional teacher prep programs, especially in critical needs areas. At this time, I would like to invite Ms. Carolyn Hayden, our Coordinator for Administrative Employment. One of the last questions that we were asked on December 5th was to talk a little bit about the principal pool process, and we were asked to provide some updates and some overviews of the pool process, and Ms. Hayden is here to do that for us this evening.
Okay, good evening. So our current process that we're using, we're in our third year, was really founded and developed through research. Most importantly, the foundation of that research came out of the Wallace work. Wallace embarked on a six-year study with six large school divisions on the principal pipeline, which is really from standards all the way through supervision and support, and the hiring and selection being that middle part of the process. We've received feedback about the virtual interview, the Skype portion, and so based on that, we will be making an adjustment to that part in the process as we move forward. We are currently, along with other large school divisions, engaged in work with the Wallace Foundation. Wallace recently invited the 90 largest school systems in the United States to partner with them on a year-long look into their principal pipeline work, and so we have begun to engage in that work. Currently, we've admitted 106 candidates into our principal pool, and we've provided the demographics of those candidates in the slide.
And additionally, we've posted another PowerPoint with information regarding the principal pool process. We knew that this wasn't a principal pool work session, that there were many different topics to discuss, but of course, if there are questions with any of the information that's been posted to Board Docs, we are available to answer those questions. And I think that you can see from our presentation this evening that Fairfax County, we're a microcosm of what we're experiencing across the nation in terms of teacher recruitment and teacher retention, although our retention is higher than the national average. Our team is actively working to ensure that we're getting the best and brightest candidates. We work very closely with our RAS and executive principals to ensure that we're hiring the best principals and that they're working with those principals to provide the appropriate feedback for our teachers. So we're ready to answer questions this evening, and I also just want to thank this team for the work that they were able to put together in a rather quick turnaround from our December 5th school board presentation to this evening. They have worked around the clock to compile this data, and we're happy to share, and happy to share the efforts of their work over the year.
Just one clarification before you start, because that's a breakdown. Do you also have that breakdown between elementary certified and secondary?
We do not currently have that breakdown.
All right, thank you guys so much. That's a lot of information, and we asked a lot of questions, and you revised accordingly, so thank you. Right now, I have Ms. Hines, and followed by Ms. Corbett Sanders, and then Ms. Evans.
So the more information you give us, the more questions we have, right? So I will try to be kind and brief. I mean, thank you very much for this report. I'll just try to be brief so I don't give you a lot more work. So on Slide 3, where you're talking about all the different best practices and ideas for recruiting and retaining teachers, a lot of good stuff in there. I mean, childcare and other, some other ideas that you had. Is there an effort right now on the superintendent's part to sort of put together a strategic package of ideas and put a price tag on them so that, because I think in order for the board to take a look at that, you know, in a realistic way, we'd have to know what's possible and what it would cost, so.
So I would say, of course, in a month, we will have the superintendent's proposed budget. We have some ideas here. I can tell you already that I plan to support additional support for TAM. TAM is the Talent Acquisition Management that Sean heads up. I've been particularly interested in programs that look to change the culture and help us recruit male teachers and teachers of color, but I don't want to get ahead of myself or the board for a specific ask. Every department this year, as part of our budget process, had a chance, really the first time in almost a decade to come, and I said, "Vision for me, what you need to get to the metrics in our strategic plan," which we recognize may still be revised, but still the broad vision, the broad vision. And they put many of these ideas together already for the budget process. Will every one of them be on there? We have still, you know, a limited budget, but we're using this to inform our budget process.
Thank you, and I guess I would recommend, even if you don't put it in your proposed budget, if there's a way to have a separate document that here are the reaches, here's the vision budget, and let the next school board, you know, make priorities with some information. So thank you. On Slide 5, I just, and this is recruiting and retaining teachers of color, I was, when I was Chair of WABE a few years ago, I remember going to a presentation at PG County about a program that they have to recruit and retain African-American male teachers, and it was wildly successful, and I have not been able to find information about that since then. I've kind of lost contact with the people there.
It wasn't called Call Me Mister, was it? Was it called Call Me Mister?
Maybe it was, and so if you know folks in--
You'll be hearing more.
Okay, good, that's, that's--
Hold that channel to January 7th. That's what I would say.
All right, thank you.
Stay tuned.
Okay, thank you, that's great. So on Slide 7, you make the statement that we do not have, let me see if I can find it, we do not have a central, we do not have a centralized hiring process, and I guess my question, and that creates a lot of issues, right? Because we're asking, we're doing all kinds of training and support for principals to do the right thing, and how many school buildings, 190-somethings, 190 school buildings, right? And that's difficult. So can we just get your thoughts, or maybe superintendent's thoughts, about why we don't have a more centralized process, the risks and benefits of becoming more centralized?
Well, let me start and then let Helen and Marty share what you want. We've been decentralized since the beginning of time. What we standardized two or three years ago was standardizing that principals had to go to a standardized pool from which to pull interviews. We didn't even have a pool that was standardized. We had a central pool, and then everybody in the school had their own swimming pool, and you didn't have to dive into the central, now correct me if I say it wrong, Dr. Nixon, but you didn't have to go to that pool, you could have your nearby house pool. Well, sometimes the people that are near your house or in your network want to be as diverse, depending on who you are. So now, we did, over the last two years, move everyone to a centralized pool from which they have to draw at least three applicants. Three, not just one, not just two, three. But the actual hiring process still takes place locally at the school site, most of the time with the panel, but as Dr. Nixon said, occasionally, occasionally, depending on the time, weekend, last minute, could be just the principal themselves. Dr. Nixon, anything I missed?
So I think, to your point about it having been decentralized for so long, the team in Talent Acquisition Management, I think, works very closely, has time on the All County Principal Meeting, has been a featured guest for the last couple of years, even before my arrival, and the discussions and the breakout sessions are really around what are those best practices to make sure that they are consistent across the board. And with the principal pool selection, I can use that as an example, we do have active and collaborative conversations with our region assistant superintendent partners, and going into planning the All County Principal Meeting for January also is a collaborative process with our colleagues in OPLFE and the regions to make sure that we are all consistent around the message that we are giving to principals so that we can at least standardize those practices as best we can. And also, Sean and his team have done a really great job. As we go into the staffing season, we've deployed teams into schools to help folks look at their staffing, to be intentional about their hiring, to examine what's going on, and keeping our RAS partners included in those conversations that we're having. So I don't know if necessarily the culture currently allows for a centralized process and that we would even be staffed appropriately for it right now, but the remedy for that is to make sure we are out in front, talking about what the best practices are and how those practices can be consistent, and making sure that we carve out time with Dr. Ivy and her team to help get that message out to our principals.
So Ms. Hines, if I could, this is a big issue, right? This is one of our four big goals. Can we centralize hiring at scale, or do we need to make sure we have the most diverse applicant pool and then train our principals, who all have goals, including their SIP goals at the school, to say, "You need to align your school goals to the strategic goals"? They also know their own demographics of the school. My belief, even when the consultant came to talk to us about structure, centralized, decentralized, the number-one thing that has to happen isn't in the structure, but is just right here. In the heart of the school leader, what are they committed to creating in their school in terms of a welcoming and culturally responsive environment? And that includes a commitment to diverse hiring practices. So we put it up here to be straightforward and transparent that we don't have a centralized, but I don't want to necessarily make folks think that the answer is a centralized, you could have a centralized process without people, without the right training, and still come out with some of the issues that we are encountering right now in terms of trying to diversify our staff.
Yeah, so my only suggestion would be that we not let go of the possibility of a centralized process, because if what we're doing is not working over a couple of years and we continue to see the same gaps, then, I mean, it sounds, you're right, it's a change in culture and cost, probably a significant change in cost if you went to a centralized process, I'm guessing, but that's just my thought. I'll go to the principal pool, oh, hang on, I'm sorry, Slide 18. Yes, on the principal pool, I kind of, I had this thought about HRC and their charge this year. I was, I was looking at it, and I wonder if one of the things that someone should be doing also is having those principals that are doing a good job. Tell us what that is. You know, I just think in general, I wonder how well we're using the principals who are doing a great job to create the expectations, to communicate to other principals and to communicate to HR, and maybe you are, sort of what to look for in hiring. And then I know we have a mentorship program between, you know, successful principals and not-so-successful principals, but just using those successful principals more as models and as support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Thank you, and I'm impressed with the amazing amount of work you've done since our board meeting, and I really appreciate your hard work. Wanted to go through a couple of things. Comparison of entry-level salaries. One of the things I will mention to you is that I had a conversation about entry-level salaries with some of our peers in neighboring districts, and was told that Loudoun actually intentionally sets their salaries at 10% of the regional average, above the regional average, so that they can get people in their first year. No, that's what they say. So they claim that their entry level is 10% above the regional average so that they can attract people to their district. Next, on the teacher residency program, I just want to suggest that this is a great program. It's one that I'm pretty well acquainted with in the Boston context, because they work very closely with Boston University, and I offer, as some of you know, I'm on their advisory board, I offer that if we want to do a deeper dive into what they're doing, I think we should meet with them. They have been willing to do so in the past. Along those lines, Boston U also has a relationship with New York City in which they are helping attract and retain 10,000 men of color as part of the-- as part of the work that they're doing with them. And they've been pretty successful in that program, so you might want to look at that. And then I wanted to talk a little bit about the Teach for Tomorrow and some of the work that was announced just this past week with the Governor's G3 Program. The G3 Program does allow for paying the college tuition at Nova for low- and middle-income students. And one of the identified areas is the area of early childhood education. And so I'm hoping that we're having conversations with them on how we can take advantage of that G3 Program. Last, you talk about the retention of provisional licenses, or the awarding of provisional licenses for hires in special ed. I would appreciate understanding a bit more about how we retain them. And last, on the accountability at the building level, I would suggest that for hiring, that we have some sort of accountability by metrics of what we expect from our principals and our regional assistant superintendent, or regional assistant superintendents, yes. Last thing, principal pool. Can I just, very quickly, Wallace Foundation, you say that it costs $42 per pupil for a district to participate in the whole Wallace programming? I added that up, that's $7,938,000. Are we paying Wallace $7,938? Or is there a different cost for our participation there? Because you say it's $42.
We're not paying Wallace anything to participate. The $42 is what they're saying is the cost to a school division if you implement the full principal pipeline. And that's through the six modules, which is standards, all the way through pre-service preparation, the selective hiring. They're just breaking down what the cost is, saying it's a feasible approach at an average cost of $42 per student.
And we're currently just serving as thought partners with other districts around the country with Wallace, facilitating that work. So we're not paying to be part of Wallace at this point.
So I think we need to clarify that in our presentation, just because it looks like it's $42 per pupil. And if you have 189,000 pupils, times 42, that's how you get there. Thank you.
Any other comments? I'm sure you'll be hearing about Wallace more. Ms. Evans?
Thank you, I thank you for this excellent report. I primarily have a few comments and then just really two smaller questions. One is, it's really wonderful to see the best practices up there and to have it all put together. I do think that, I agree with Ms. Hines, that putting together some sort of a package that's going to be more and more important for us to be using all of those, as many of those tools as we possibly can when you look at, later on in the report, and look at the number of applicants per hires, per vacancy. We see it declining pretty significantly, so I think that's going to be more important in the future. I found your insights excellent on the challenges that African-American and Hispanic teachers and staff have. And one of the issues, the translation issue, I have heard from both students and staff that there is a greater need for translators, just people in the schools who can translate. And rather than add an extra burden on just some of our teachers, and I know many of our teachers do that quite willingly, but at the same time, it does add another burden if they are always being called on to do that particular job. On Teachers for Tomorrow, I was at a, we have a book club at Justice High School discussing anti-racism, and Teachers for Tomorrow came up. And most, this was teachers and parents and community members, and not very many people were aware of it. So I think perhaps getting the word out more to people in the schools, particularly to our students. I see it's still a relatively small program. So I think that that also has some merit here, too. One of my two questions on this, if I'm reading this right, the number of special education teachers that we have hired has declined. That surprised me because haven't our, the number of special education students significantly increased? That's one of my questions. And the other question is on page, I think it's on page five of the report. I just want to make, you had it there just a second ago. I just want to be sure I'm reading this right because it may be, it may be, we have a lot of documents in front of us today. It's the chart, let's see, it says SB Goal 3. And I'm looking at page five where it says it's number nine. What is the makeup of individuals in teacher prep programs by race, gender? If you could find that for us.
Ms. Evans, if we, you're out of time, I'd like to wrap this up, this question up.
I'm just, okay, right, and so it's, okay. That's one half of it. I want to, yes, and that's the second half of it. Am I reading that right? The 444 is number in the US that are enrolled in teacher prep programs, but only 230 actually get teaching degrees. Okay.
Yes, so the 230 is the graduates of programs. So these are folks that have completed the program in that year. And then this slide represents all individuals enrolled. So freshmen, sophomore, junior, seniors, folks in masters or post-baccalaureate programs. So that's a comprehensive look.
That makes sense, okay, I see. Well, then, my only other question, I would like a short go back, but, okay, I did have one question that they-
If they'd like to answer a question, that'd be great.
So the slide related to special ed is essentially the number of folks that we are working to hire. So that takes into account turnover primarily. So it's not that we don't have an increased number of teachers, but the turnover may be less than it was in the past.
Oh, the turnover's smaller. Then that's good news.
Sure, yes. So, and there's a variety of factors involved, but that can be one of the factors. The other piece, that would be one reason why the need would be less. Even though we're growing the number of overall teachers, there's likely less turnover contributing to the need.
Dr. Bray Brown?
Sandy, you made a comment about Teachers for Tomorrow. It's been an elective class. I went to high school principals last week and asked them to make sure it's in the elective class course offering this coming month, when kids start to sign up, at every school. And we're going to look with this administration next year to make it a standardized course offering in every school.
That's great.
We've really got to go ahead and just take ownership that we have to build the pipeline in Fairfax and not expect these people to just suddenly appear on our front doorsteps. We have kids who want to do it, we just have to put it in. And so it's, I think you'll see growth next year, and then the year after. We want to go to full scale and have that course offered as a standard offering across every high school.
And then that will help with the communications piece, too.
Absolutely. Absolutely, and it will be part of the whole Back to Fairfax program marketing campaign, of which I think we have one tomorrow night while we just have the public listening in. And have had tremendous success. It's resonating with people about this Back to Fairfax. Mr. Smith?
We're getting emails from students wondering how they can become part of the program. Oh, I've heard from some, and so it's really starting to take off.
Mr. Moon?
Thank you, Ms. Kishkamara. Thank you for all the additional information that has been provided. And I am looking forward to further information on my questions, so maybe you think I get those before Thursday night?
Yes, sir.
So that I can vote fully informed?
You will have it by Wednesday. I'm giving my word, yes.
Okay, thank you so much. With the retention rate that we are enjoying, if it is about, what, 91% per year? Correct? If you lose 9% per year, in five years, you will lose about 40%, close to 40%. Is that, is that okay? Losing about 40% of our teachers in five years?
So I think that ultimately, any organization's going to have natural attrition. And so we have retirements, we have folks that are leaving the profession because it's not a good fit for them. And so, you know, we're falling either at or above the national level in terms of our retention. So we're setting pace in terms of the industry. Ultimately, we want to keep everyone that's a strong teacher and that's contributing very positively to the lives of our students. But we do have some folks that it's just not a good match or a good fit, and we have to help them along in finding another pathway.
Is there information out there for us to be able to compare? Our teacher retention rate versus a particular profession, professions? Engineers, doctors, lawyers, civil servants, et cetera? I just wanted to have a better feeling, better sense of whether losing about 40% of our teachers for a variety of different reasons, whether that's healthy percentage?
So are you asking what the retention rates for these other-
Other professions?
Other professions are?
Is there data out there?
So we haven't taken on that task of looking at what the retention rates are for engineers or other industries. But what I can tell you is, we're, a professional colleague through the Society for Human Resources Management in the insurance industry, let's say, their turnover rate is very similar to ours, just doing a very brief comparison.
So whatever information you can provide to us.
Right, and I think I can try to find some of that through the SHRM, the SHRM folks.
Thank you. And for the principal pool, amongst, you know, little over, more than hundreds candidates in the pool, very disappointed that I didn't see a single Hispanic candidate in the pool. Has that been consistently been their low over the last several years?
So the pool is still relatively new. I think when we look at the absence of Hispanic candidates in the pool, I think some of the things that we have to ask ourselves is, how do we do talent spotting and checking? And how are we having conversations with our principals to identify teachers in their building who have potential? And how they mentor and coach them and approach them? And ask them questions about perhaps where they see themselves in five to 10 years, and how can I help you get there? So a lot of that is helping to coach our principals in doing some talent spotting and then having the events that we host in HR and making sure that we are casting a wide net and then making sure that teachers have the information they need to come to HR for our open houses.
Sure, so how long have you had candidate pool? How many years?
Two and a half years.
Two and a half years. And each year, we have new candidates coming in to join the pool? And could you provide us about the number of Hispanic candidates in the last 2 and 1/2 years altogether?
Number of Hispanic candidates to the pool?
To the pool.
To the pool. I don't know that I have the demographic data in front of me.
By Thursday, if you could do, thank you.
Mr. Moon, did you want to go back?
I was looking at, I don't know which way they was going.
He got reset, oh, I'm sorry.
So what do I do? I mean, is my time?
Oh, oh, oh. Right, yes.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
I mean, I didn't see that go down all the way to zero. Okay, okay. Okay, put me on go back.
I want to answer any more of his questions? Okay. Ms. Strauss?
First of all, thank you very much for this impressive amount of information and the turnaround in answering questions. This is, is really commendable. It's as though, you know, we all need to print this out again and just, you know, keep reading this every night and digesting it. It's really very good. Okay, questions? One is, it appears that, for the first time, elementary teachers nationwide are a critical area. I don't remember that ever being the case. And that's stunning. That's new, okay. On Attachment C, where it looks at those folks who have been offered a job and then declined it. And it looks to me, Attachment C, that, for example, 13.8% of white candidates declined an offer, 15.7% African-American or black, et cetera. Does that mean that our black or African-American candidates who were offered a job declined it at the highest rate? Which I actually, because I know that's a highly sought-after group of people.
Yes, so yes, that is a correct conclusion that our African-American or black candidates are declining at a higher rate compared with other subgroups.
They're being hired away by, yeah, because as I'm talking to principals my end of the county, it is they're interviewing a small group of people who are highly qualified, they really want, and they're losing their candidates, and which is very disappointing. And this is exactly what they are seeing. So at any rate, thank you again for all this information. So this will be evening reading for many nights to memorize it. It's very good, thank you.
Do anyone else want to respond?
I want to share one thing. When this question first came up, the African-American rate for decline is higher. But it's not higher by two or three orders of magnitude, which I think was an important thing to point out. And I also think what we have to start to look at, and part of this is having a one Fairfax lens. It's about the school system, and it's also about the community in which the school system resides. Are we a community that honors the diversity in our communities for all kinds of diverse people to want to come and feel part of the community? When I started my teaching career, another young African-American high school teacher in Hernan with me did not feel the community piece. He felt a school connection, but he didn't feel a community connection. So I do think there's part of working, as we have our joint board meetings moving forward, what can we do to double down and have similar messages coming from our school system about inclusivity? And also about our county and our communities and the supports and wraparounds we give for communities, diverse communities. And I think together, that is a much, much stronger message that can become a competitive advantage for Fairfax County if it chooses to do so. And I believe we need to do so. It's also going to, just on something Mr. Moon said, the real way we're going to get Latinos into the principal pool was talent spotting and then investing in, helping support people. Remember, we just revised after 10 years tuition reimbursement. When you are just paying to get by on a teacher's salary, to then go back and reinvest, and Virginia Tech cost me $10,000 15 years ago. I think somebody told me today, I won't mention who may be in the room, it's now $17,000. Think about a teacher making 60 grand a year, and then they got to cough up $17,000 to go get an administrative endorsement. So are we prepared to invest, not just in the salary, but in professional development programs that become really an escalator for our folks to get into these admin programs?
Thank you, Dr. Bray Brand, Ms. McLaughlin?
I appreciate the opportunity to follow up on Dr. Bray Brand's comments because I do appreciate the positive intent that you're coming at, that how do we build a pool of administrators? And the thing is, is we can't take this profession in isolation. So we know that we have many professions in the United States where we don't have enough people going into them. And just to name off, we have a shortage of nurses, we have a shortage of social workers. And to go in and get your graduate degrees, like I did when I got my masters, it can be very expensive, especially if you go to a private graduate school versus a public, and even public if you're out of state. So I just want to be cautious about our conversations. Everything needs to be driven, not just with context, but also, again, with the data. Everything needs to be driven, not just with context, but also, again, with the data. So if we end up, again, looking at what our peers are doing, because we compete against the wavy schools, then I think that's where I'd like to see us root our conversations. I'd also like to pull up, it was slide Attachment B, which was the Teachers for Tomorrow data chart. And the reason I want to bring this up is because, again, I know this board, this school division, at a national level, we're struggling to look at the diversity of representation of our teachers in our classrooms, here in Fairfax County and nationally. And I just want to draw, raise attention to when you look at gender, because I think that's a real, easy way to look at what we talk about pipeline. Because you can look at gender, you can look at race, we have problems in the pipeline. But if you just go to gender alone, are we to believe that when you look at, in context to, then, we had another data chart, which I don't even know which one to pull up that is, because there's so many of them, but it was the data chart that showed, I get C, Attachment C, and that showed our qualified applicants, offers accepted and declined. If, and then there's another chart that just shows our overall representation. If you start doing this overlaying, you're going to see the same pattern over and over again. So I don't want us to use our time in a way that's not productive. What's productive is to look at what are our overall populations looking like, even just coming out of Fairfax County schools and considering a, a career in teaching? What do our pools look like at the national level when they're graduating from the universities? We have this problem, and it's everywhere. So then the question just becomes, you want to have the representation, but you also have to recognize that until something else happens at the national level, we've got the pool that we've got. So in terms of the report, I do want to just say, I appreciate everything my colleagues have said, and expressing their gratitude for the tremendous amount of information.
Ms. McLaughlin, can you?
Yeah. I'll wrap up, just like everybody else was allowed to wrap up, including the Chair of the Board.
I appreciate you wrapping it up, and I'd love to put you on down for a go back.
Yeah, you can. I just wanted to wrap up the comment.
Go ahead. Thank you.
But, but the bottom line is, volume of data charts, these are all incredible. This is how you build your annual report. The report itself still doesn't really have the, the meaningful analysis. And all of this information here, I would love to see it analyzed, and then we actually bring solutions. So my go back, I'll give some examples of what I'm thinking about, because I feel like the hard work is here, but we're just not quite there yet.
Ms. Schultz is going to go next. I want to make sure we got everybody a first time go around. Did we get everyone? Okay.
So you surrendered to me and recognized me, and then, and you, we'll do the reverse.
I'm starting your time. Oh, you do not have ninety-nine minutes.
I get ninety-nine minutes. Woo! I, I can fill them all, too, baby.
Oh, my God, stop.
Now, here, let's see. Reset, preset. Can you trust me to start my own?
As long as it says three.
You lost nothing. Okay. So on starting salary, on the comparison at the beginning, where you have the starting salary as the metric, the problem is, is that that's the only place that you have the, the metric for the discussion of whether we go to beyond 105. You would need to have, we would have, need to have more market points than just that, because we're not just talking about beyond 105. Particularly, I want to bring up the issue of Loudon. Loudon has a longer contract and a longer contract day. That's why it's more money. And so this needs to, I'm disappointed that this is not broken out so that it is amortized by either a daily rate. I mean, they need to be comparable. This is not apples to apples. So the fact that they have a longer contract day and a longer contract year, guess what? They earn more money. It's not that, that surprising. Slide four, you have seventeen point three percent at the bottom bullet. Is that of all teachers, of our teachers, or of all teachers nationwide?
No, this was, this was part of this article from Ingersoll and Merrill. This is, this was just a research point.
So that's all teachers nationwide?
Yes.
Okay. So then we go to, so, I'm sorry, slide nine, the rate of teacher hires. So they're going in the wrong direction. It was sixty-two percent. It's fallen 10%, which is bad. It was sixty, sixty, now fifty-two. So to me, there's something wrong there. I don't know what the makeup is, if it's a different makeup. I think we should have some discussion about that in the response. Slide 10, this lists applicants. I would appreciate a comment on whether those are qualified applicants or just applicants? Because who cares if they're just an applicant? I care if they're a qualified applicant. If you go to slide 18, you have on here that you're gathering retention by school, which is crucial, but we also need a question of retention by school, by job category? Because my question is, by which category? Because we have overall retention, but we clearly have loss in some. And then the next comment I have is the Wallace Foundation was predominantly a foundation for arts, for the, for disadvantaged students, and only in recent years have they shifted towards this principal pipeline. They're not a subject matter expert in this. And in fact, they're on the horizon of exploring this information. So I, I'm, I'm concerned that the Wallace Foundation, while they're interesting, they're highly, they're putting a lot of money into it, and I, yeah, I don't know. Yeah, I don't know that we're, I, I don't know how wedded I am to information out of a group that has historically been an arts-focused for disadvantaged students. I'm looking for some answers there.
Don't hop the gun. I'll break you back to you in a second.
As long as you understand your time, Ms. Schultz. Let me start with the Wallace one. Actually, Dr. Dan Dominance brought the Wallace Foundation in almost 20 years ago to create a leadership pipeline. It created the formation of LEED, which we had for many, many years. I had the opportunity to participate in it. Many people, frankly, I'm not going to do a roll call and ask people to stand who were experienced by it, but maybe I should. Marty's saying I should. If you were in part of the LEED program, why don't you stand up and let the board see? No, 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 I know, I, hold it. I, I'm not done talking. I listened. So I'm sharing. The Wallace Foundation, a few years ago, during Race to the Top, funded several school district to do principal pipeline development with major school districts. I think it was Tampa Hillsborough, New York City. They've got a lot of experience in it. I don't know all the stuff about the arts, and I'm, I'm sure they, they may have an expertise in that, too. I also think Wallace is who we've reached out to as part of this 90 district study. As you saw, we've also researched best practices around the country, and I am going to follow up with Ms. Corbett Sanders with the Boston Teacher Residency piece. I think that's an important group to look at, too. So we're not wedded to one. But the reality is, if you go back and look at the last 10 years of budget cuts, we eviscerated professional development in this school system. We got rid of LEED, and now, we've tried, just as I arrived, with Chase and his, my predecessor trying to come up with something, to re-resurrect on a much smaller scale, something that we walked away from over 10 years ago, and now we're paying for it. And it's figuring out how to build back that program with, and this is what I would say, Ms. Schultz, not just copying what we did 10 or 20 years ago, but with an eye to what's cutting edge. In fact, when the Wallace people came here, they said, Scott, it really isn't about rebuilding everything that you remember growing up in the system. It is about creating some new structures, and we hope to have something out of this year end. I'm actually going up to New York City with Dr. Nixon in June and have some ideas about the best practices around these 90 school districts that we can bring back and inform the next board.
Do we have any other responses to Ms. Schultz's areas of concern?
So I wanted to address the comment about the student-teacher slide, where there was, there's a decline in terms of the number of folks that have signed with us. Our team recognizes that, and we've been looking at ways that we can ensure that we're out in front of those programs more frequently, with much more depth, so that we're really establishing those relationships. The relationships at the school are one thing, but then turning those folks around and, and having them apply and become employees of ours is the next step. One of the things that we're going to be doing this January is bringing our student-teachers together, and we're going to hold a reception for them. It's really important that we show that we care and we're invested in them, and have that opportunity for them in a more informal setting to just network and understand and learn, you know, from us, and hopefully turn that around to them applying and us hiring them. It's really about building those relationships and engaging folks. And we're trying to layer on as many different strategies that are effective to, to ensure that we're able to loop those individuals back. Our PDS program is our strongest program in terms of return to the division. And so, as Dr. Nixon mentioned, seventy-three percent of our students in that program are coming back to us as teachers. Part of that is, it's a year-long program, and so they're getting a much more intense experience in schools and really having that solid foundation, but they're, they're getting locked in with that relationship. So we want to continue to foster and build that. We've ensured that we are reaching out to programs, reaching out to our student-teachers, inviting them to our job fairs, trying to get them on board as early as we possibly can. It's a highly competitive market. And so Fairfax is a really strong school division, and when folks see that someone's student taught in Fairfax County Public Schools on a resume, they're trying to pull them in as quickly as they can. We have to beat them to the punch and bring them back to the division as quickly as we possibly can.
The teachers on page 10, the question about the applicants and hires, they were qualified applicants, they were qualified in the pool, which means that they had a bachelor's degree, they had completed a teach, a student teaching experience, they had their certification.
I would, I would then suggest that that slide needs to change to qualified applicants, because applicant is not a qualified applicant. And then, thank you. One of them, no, no, I asked the questions, they need to answer the questions I asked first. What about the starting salary and the Loudon, and amortizing the rates by contract?
We can go back and check the contract lengths of all the districts and then include that in an updated.
And what I can tell you, though, even in looking at those different, differing contract lengths, and having been to several teacher hiring fairs, and having been a first-year teacher myself, when teachers are comparing school districts with one another, they're not necessarily looking at the hourly breakdown, they're looking at the, or the number of days, they're looking at the starting salary. So as we think about those comparators, while we can look at that other piece, it's important to know that perception of the, of the, the largest salary is where those recruits go for hiring fairs. And I think Dean is shaking his head back there. I've seen it happen several times. I will say, one of the things that was interesting to me, I told Dr. Nixon this after looking at this data myself, Loudon actually still has a little bit higher applicant pool per position than we do.
Go ahead, Dr.
No, I'm, I am. So one of the things that we did over the last three or four years strategically, this board did, was address the SAG in the middle. I really want to look at a little more deeply, as we're looking at the millennials, whether they're more interested if the SAG comes a bit more in the beginning, after they come in at what would be a higher price point or a higher salary level initially, and then have a slower and steadier progression. It's interesting, because Loudon right now, in their budget discussions, compares the total career earnings in Loudon to Fairfax. We're still over $300,000 more when you spend a career in Fairfax than when you're in Loudon. But when you're coming in and just making that point of sale at a teacher job fair or whatever, are you just fixated on the number? Not even looking at the contract length or the numbers, Mr. Smith said. And I want to take a little bit of a look at that, as we keep talking about tweaking the scale and how we tweak it. And I don't even want to say necessarily a stag, a SAG, but whether a little bit flatter after an initial high point could be perhaps a more competitive piece for the marketplace. Something that we'll, we'll take a look at.
Okay. Thank you so much, Dr. Bray Brand. I'm, do you want to put my time on? I'm going to answer one of your questions, though.
You're going to re-ask my question? Well, it was on my list, too.
We can share. Okay. So thank you guys so much, and I appreciate the responses. I saw the beginning, I saw you guys add a lot of information, want you to know how much we appreciate that. I appreciate that. What it says to me, though, is this is an ongoing conversation. So as an, as a next step, I would like to focus on a few things, some of which I will mention now. One of them has to do with how we talk about retention. I know we broke down kind of in overall categories, but I also believe we have some problems in special education. I wonder how that's varying in terms of retaining those teachers versus the, you know, a general ed teacher. I'm wondering if that changes by region? Because we have some additional challenges, depending on what region you're in, and yet our staffing, we've had discussions on how that might be impacted. And also, elementary school versus high school. So that, that's one category. Another huge concern for me is fidelity in our hiring practices. I know that when I came on board, at least as I recall it, we'd had that switch over to somewhat of a centralized pool. I, I know, am not the only board member that is concerned that we're not seeing the needle move. And so I would love to see a report on how we, and I know you've researched the, the other ways that, you know, best practices across the country, but what can we realistically look at, at the least cost? Or, you know, how can we balance that out? Because our, our community, the, the, the face of our community is changing rapidly, and we are not quite keeping up. So that, that is a concern for me. The other part, which I think is huge, is just the level of support that we have for these, some of the fragile folks that, one, don't even want to come here, and I think some of that has to do with salary, but I also think it may have to do with how they feel supported when they get here. It, you, you don't want to stay if you feel like an island. And I know that I've talked to employees who have expressed that, if you're that minority of minorities in that school. And so that's one of the areas I'd like to look at. I'll just pause for a second, so I have 30 seconds to respond.
So we can continue to look at breaking out and breaking down the data points by region and level, right? And special education, and then providing that to the school board. In terms of the hiring practices, we, we alluded to what our current practice is and how it's a little bit difficult right now to try to move from a process that is decentralized to a centralized process. But that, I think we demonstrated through the work that talent acquisition does in working in conjunction with the regions during the hiring season, and going to the schools and working one-on-one with the principals. If we're going to make progress and move the needle, it's going to have to be through intentional conversations about examining who is in my building, and then being intentional about how I'm going to make that look different in the coming years. And that is a school-by-school discussion, and those are conversations we know that are going to be had.
And I also would like to add that I don't think that it happens in a, necessarily in a vacuum. So when we look at hiring practices, it also dovetails with the work that Dr. Duran is doing around equity. And so it all comes together, and so as we're, we're collaborating with other departments in Fairfax County to actually share this message, that it is a unified message around equity, around hiring practices, and not just, we'll focus on this one thing in and of itself, separate from another area of the, our personnel hiring issues.
I just want to hit one thing on centralized versus decentralized. Actually, what we have is, we have schools that are knocking it out of the park in having diverse staff. That's fact number one. We have model schools, and what you all shared already is a board, that we do, but we need to accelerate, is sharing the best practice, our positive outliers. Our positive outliers on every indicator need to be up and leading our professional development at our all-county principals' meetings when we have topics. And to be honest, we've gotten away a little bit from, we used to do best practices and HR training like, it was like, like having breakfast every morning. I think we went away a little bit from intentional PD directed around that. So we have a third of our schools knocking it out of the park, we have a third or maybe even a bit more doing okay, but they could still really benefit. And then we have some schools that were in that parent advisory from HRC where there really is, it's a desert. It's an, there's no people of color in the school. That's not acceptable. It's 2019, that's not acceptable. And we have to have those conversations and we are, Dr. Ivy, Mr. Smith gave Dr. Ivy the list of the staffing for those schools and RAS are having those conversations to say, this is not how we're going to do business going forward and you've got to get committed to hiring a diverse workforce. And I'm confident the regional assistant superintendent team that is here tonight, we asked them to come for this conversation, is onboard with making sure that's going to happen in every single school by every single level. And it is going to happen, it is going to happen in Fairfax County. But it's conversations, to be honest, that with an equity lens, about being comfortable to be uncomfortable, we haven't been always comfortable to have these kind of conversations before and we're getting more comfortable to do so.
Thank you, Dr. Bray Brand. I have a number of ideas that can be added to that discussion, including teacher-led professional development and buy-in and how we support one another. But I also want to talk a little, just a tiny bit about Mason, George Mason. I think I had an opportunity to ask you, Dr. Nixon, about the diversity of the pool because we do a lot of hiring from Mason. And I'm wondering if we need to include in that type of relationship, the way we have with Mason, if we need to look at some HBCUs and develop other relationships similarly with other schools that have diverse populations.
That's what the residency programs that I spoke about would be a way to do just what you've said. Yes. Build those relationships with those schools.
Okay. All righty. We have some go-bags, Mr. Moon?
I'll be checking my time very carefully. So with that in mind, thank you, thank you.
We got your time.
Does low unemployment rate, is that affecting number of candidates? Is probably, that's an obvious question for the answer.
Is that, can you, I'm sorry.
Low unemployment rate?
Yes.
Is that impacting us?
I'm certain that it does, I'm certain that it does.
Would you be able to quantify that?
Well, I'm working on that response for you in the written response that you sent last Thursday, so we are doing our research to find that. What I can say to you is that...
Thank you. Clock is still ticking somehow.
Okay.
All right, thank you. All right, so if a number of, average number of applicants per vacancy, vacant teacher position, if a Prince William County, it's not just Loudon, it seems to be Prince William County, even Prince William County is doing better than we are doing, even though our, no, that's not, that's not the case? I was looking at your information provided earlier this evening.
So I think one of the things that's important in context when looking at that data is the need is less than half of what we have. And so when we're all competing for the same talent pool and likely grabbing similar candidates, if you take the Loudon number and cut it in half, it's much closer to what our applicant rate is here. So, yes, they're reporting a higher average number of applicants per vacancy, however, they're only filling 800 some odd positions where we're filling close to 2,000. And so we are competing for a finite pool and likely pulling from a lot of the same applicants.
Sean, let me take that with you, Mr. Moon.
Then how relevant are those information to us then? The comparative data, Prince William and Loudon, those average number of applicants for position, you know, if you are using your logic because they are smaller districts, they're not necessarily doing better than we are. I mean, I don't quite get that.
Don't quite get why we provided that data?
No, 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 your logic. And how relevant are the data that were provided to us this evening then?
So, Sean, let me take a crack at this. There are 100 people at a swimming pool, right? There are 100 people at a swimming pool, but there's two pools next door. The 100 people at the pool, they can apply to this pool, they can also...
Talk about, what you're saying is like, everybody's applying to every school district.
Because it's so close by and since we have the largest numbers, when you divide that pool by the number of applicants, our ratio looks the worst. Most people can go to our party and also walk over to the party next door and people hedge their bets and apply, just like a kid would apply to multiple colleges, they're applying to multiple school districts all in the same place.
So what you're saying is basically since our pool, our pool is more than twice as large as Loudon or Prince William, as long as a number of average applicant per position is more than 50%, we are even doing a better job than Loudon and Prince William, is that the logic I should follow?
I would want to do more analysis of breaking that down, but I'm just simply saying, in the overall, when it comes in, here's the pool for the DC region of people to apply. Smaller districts can have a better-looking admissions rate because they're only hiring a certain number of positions. We have the largest, so we would have to have a job market that would only come here and only go to Fairfax. And to be honest, maybe 10 or 20 years ago, there were people who would say, I'm coming to Fairfax, otherwise I'm going to go to New York, Philadelphia, Miami Dade. As this place has grown, right, it's gotten more cosmopolitan beyond just Fairfax. So I think that's a little bit of where the edge may have gone, but I think there's some work to do still to dig into that.
Okay, my one last question is this. I want to see us recruiting and retaining best teachers for our students. That's one goal. And how do we do it is a big question for us. Another question that I have is, how do we know that we have actually recruited, hired the best teachers? How do we know? Dr. Bray Brand?
I think we can look at a few things. The licensing of the teachers, the practice cut scores, the recommendation letters. I would say something maybe we need to do as a future indicator is look at their performance after they've been in the division for X number of years and compare that to those that have gone to other places. And I don't think we've done that kind of data analysis. And I'm going to be honest with you, and you guys know this, five or 10 years ago, we weren't doing any of this at this level or scale because we had people pouring in and we weren't worried about it. So we're getting worried about it because the teacher shortage has come home, the economy has changed, we've had 20 years of teacher bashing that's continued regardless of the administration. That's my belief. So I'm just sharing my truth. And our young people today see teaching less, as less a respected profession, we have to change that narrative. 33% of the teacher for tomorrow in education, early education, were Latino, 33%. My money right now is on developing the Grow Your Own Pipeline. I think we can build in Fairfax our own teacher pipeline to get a lot of this back and then use that pipeline to build our administrative pipeline once, but that's a longer-term game than just, what are we going to do next year? I do think we need the county and the messaging about what Fairfax County is, including that it's an inclusive community. And I think if you did branding nationwide, I'm not sure what people think necessarily in terms of Fairfax as an inclusive community. I think the reputation nationally with Fairfax is, it's a wealthy community, even that's not true, we've shared that with our general assembly delegates, but people from afar don't maybe have the whole story and we need to tell it better. And we're going to work on doing it.
And Dr. Bray Brand and Mr. Moon, I would add that when we look at the expertise of our principals and our teachers who sit on those hiring panels as we are interviewing, we're using that expertise as we do that first round of evaluation for whether or not you get the job. And then after the fact, our administrators in our buildings are working with our principal or with our teachers, providing feedback to our teachers and using the evaluation process to help improve practice and also to help those teachers who may not find a strong match with the teaching profession, help them find other avenues. So I think that when, in those rare instances when we're not getting the best candidate, we do have structures in place to help those candidates find other avenues of employment.
Thank you. I'm going to yield my remaining 27 seconds to my, one of my colleagues.
We appreciate that, Mr. Moon. Ms. Hines?
Good, I get it. So I, just a few things. Dr. Bray Brand, I just want to say I really appreciate your participation in this conversation. You've been active in it, you have a background as a principal in the school system, you bring a lot of background knowledge to this that I think the new board especially is going to benefit from. So, thank you. Couple of things I would just comment on, I agree with you, Mr. Smith, I think that new teachers are looking at that paycheck, that's it. Because they're figuring out, how can I live in this area, as expensive as it is, I need that first paycheck, that monthly paycheck to cover my costs. And I think that that gets to, the whole question of housing, we didn't really talk about that today, I don't think, but affordable housing. And I know that Apple Federal Credit Union has a deal where teachers can buy a house, get a mortgage with no money down, I think is something they offer. And I'm wondering if there's anything else that we know of that FCPS or our partners are doing for teachers for housing and stop the clock and get an answer if there is one?
I don't know of any specific programs, but we do have our Apple partners who do have a table at many of our events who meet our folks face-to-face and they have opportunities to connect, they are at Great Beginnings, they're at Back to Fairfax. So if we're having an open house, we're inviting them.
Okay, great. Well, I think whatever more we could do, obviously, would be wonderful and partnering with the county on that. And a couple of the things, definitely the idea of using experienced and successful building leaders as trainers and role models and mentors, I think if it's something we used to do more of, you know, that we should get back to, I agree, my representative on HRC, I met with her the other night and she said, boy, I wish we were talking about that. Because that's, to me, really where the problem solving has to at least begin. And then finally, Dr. Bray Brand, thank you for mentioning one, Fairfax, when we talk about bringing people to this area and making them want to be here and stay here and feel like this is a welcoming community, Herndon, the town of Herndon, several, you know, all those years ago was not a welcoming place for a lot of people, I think it's gotten better. But this is something that I hope the future board works on publicly with our county board because you can do more. And, you know, when I think of Reston, 50 years ago, Reston had a national reputation as a place where you could move if you were an African-American family and, because they made a point of that. That was their goal, that was their marketing, that was, you know, it was the one place in Fairfax County where if you were an African-American family, you could move and be welcomed, right? And, you know, that's 50 years ago and actually Reston is dealing with the problem right now of the county not being such a welcoming place and that even Reston, I think, is suffering some. So I think the county government could do much more to get out front of this question of, do we have affordable housing? Do we have an inclusive and diverse community or do we have pockets of wealth and pockets of poverty and, you know, pockets of ethnic, you know, different ethnic backgrounds? How hard are we trying? This is a tough state to do that, it's a very developer-friendly state, but I think that we have new people in the general assembly and I think that this board and the county board should work harder on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. I will say, there is workforce housing as we develop new housing, it's not nearly enough. So, all right, next we have Ms. McLaughlin.
So, there's not going to be enough time this evening for all of us, I think, to speak to this, the depth of this report and the importance of where we want to go with it. I'm just going to reiterate again that it is your data analysis that's going to lead to the most informative conversations. So when we talk about what we want to do to attract people who are not represented in our employment pool, especially for teachers, again, I'm going to just go to, when you look at the deep disparity of a population where it's 50% female, 50% males in our county, in our country, but you've got 86% of your teaching workforce is, 86% is women, do your analysis even there to figure out what's driving it. And then certainly we want to look at it also with our racial diversity in teachers of color. But I'm worried that we're going to spend a lot of time and energy and not moving the needle. When you read the report, we've been investing lots of money into recruitment and we're not moving the needle. So can you move the needle on a pipeline that's not there so then you improve the pipeline in a different way? And not all of it's within Fairfax County Public Schools control, but I love the idea of HBCs being a place where we do those type of residency programs, I think that's a real tangible piece. But we can't change who's going into education. To the point, Dr. Bray Brand, you said, and I don't want to get into anecdotals, but, you know, it's teacher bashing. Well, anecdotally, I'll give you another one. My father was in teaching over 50 years ago, he left it after 15 years. Why did he leave? He left because the pay wasn't enough to support a family, he left because he wasn't respected by his administrators, which a lot of our teachers say professionally they don't feel respected in the building for their intellect and autonomy, they don't respect it by society. And then the workload piece, they're working all the time and there's not a work-life balance. I'm hearing from our teachers, they want to leave the profession not because we're not paying enough anymore, it's because they feel guilty if they even go home and they're not grading for another several hours. So I'm worried that we're having a lot of anecdotal conversation and the answer is in your data. Do the surveys, partner with FVA, FCFT, AFPE, and get to the heart of what is going on here for why the morale might be great in some buildings, not in others. And so in my 20 seconds left, I want to say again what I've said before, if you institute project momentum, the way we do it to go in and identify pockets of excellence, pockets of challenge and do intensive work, that's where your teacher retention issues in terms of this school division, you'll move the needle. But looking at it as a system-wide tells you nothing. The report, I don't want to know about the system, we're already great. What we need to know is which of your 200 schools, where do you have the problems? And you did mention that, Dr. Bray Brand, I appreciated you pick that up.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Any comments? Okay, Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Thank you so much. As a next step, what I would love to have, and it kind of segues with what Ms. McLaughlin just mentioned, I would love to have a coherent plan of action on how we are going to attract and retain the best in class going forward. Where do we want to be five years from now, where do we want to be 10 years from now? And that plan of action should be developed, obviously, in collaboration with our partners, the teacher associations, the principal associations, and bring that to the new board. So that would be the first thing I would love to see happen. The second is, when we talk about best in class in those buildings that do it really well and those buildings that could benefit from doing things slightly different or dramatically different, I think that a big part of it is ensuring that we have accountability metrics that are both at the building level and at the regional level. Because when you have accountability and transparency, then you're, if you set the goal and you measure it, then you have a way of determining whether or not we're meeting it and when we need to put in more resources to solve a problem or do things differently. So I would just suggest that that needs to be not only just left at the building level but also at the regional assistant superintendent level. And then last is a question I have. You talked about the principal pool and you said, we've seen some problems with Skype and so we're doing something different, are we getting rid of the Skype interview? I'd like to better understand what you're doing with the Skype piece and secondly, what are you doing to address all those people who had challenges with the Skype piece? And if you stop.
So I think the change is coming about based upon feedback that... So I think the, the change is coming about based upon feedback that we received about the Skype component. We are looking at removing that component altogether and replacing it with potentially some sort of an end basket task that they would have, a candidate would have to complete and return to us, likely a data task. We have not fully developed that out. We do want to collaborate with our region partners in ensuring that whatever we put into place accurately measures skills that we want to ensure an individual has as they enter our principal pool. So we, that's what we're looking at potentially to go forward. Rearranging some of the components that exist already, moving that data task over, and then possibly doing a face-to-face Q and A as part of our onsite to replace the interview portion of the process that would be lost by giving away the Skype component.
So based on that, I would love to see as a next step, how you rejigger it, as well as some sort of plan of action of addressing or mitigating how this impacted a lot of people who went into the, tried and applied to the pool and got tossed out just on the Skype piece. And so I would love to know how we can reach back out and maybe bring them back into the process to redo that piece.
Corbett Sanders?
Yes, I'm finished, as long as those two are on my next steps.
Okay. Did anyone wish to respond? Okay, next we have Ms. Evans.
Thank you. If you could pull up, I just have two comments. Attachment C. I know others have pointed to this, but I just wanted to make the comment, and I have made it before, but I want to reiterate it, that you can see this with different eyes. Others have seen, you know, the number of decline and how much it is, but at the end of the day, the, the range of decline is only between 84.3% and 87.4% at the high. So that's not really a big range. So I don't think that's really the problem that we're facing in terms of getting African-American and Hispanic or Latino teachers. I would point instead to the total percentage qualified of 12.9% versus 8.4% total of the, of the offered. So that represents potential there, I think. And so I just wanted to point that out. When, when we're looking at these statistics, you can look at it in a variety of ways, and I think that's one where it's, it's important to see that piece. And then my other comment is to Dr. Brabran's point about looking again at the teacher's salaries, and I, I would say, I understand where you're coming from with the beginning salaries, and you want to attract, but actually, I think we've, we've had the possibility of another approach to this. If the issue is a longer contract year, if adding a day, I mean, I realize it's expensive to add a day, but if, that might be an approach to consider, particularly since we hear from teachers all the time about the need for more, well, more money, but we also hear about more teacher workdays, a need for more teacher workdays and more professional days. So that might open up a different approach to raising those beginning salaries. And I, I would, I would just warn against doing anything that would, you know, we, we spent a lot of time and money, as you know, getting those mid-career teacher salaries up, and that was so important to us, to make sure that the teachers who are here with us, and they're, they're trained, and they do a great job, that we make sure that we retain those in the, you know, we, because that SAG, I wouldn't want to see that SAG happen again. So those were my comments.
Any responses? Thank you, Ms. Evans. Okay. Next we have Ms. Schultz.
Well, that's okay, you can look at the other.
Okay. Okay, then we'll go with Ms., okay. You guys worked it out?
Yeah.
All right. Ms. Schultz?
So a couple of things. One is the nexus of the retention issue to the climate survey. When I sit down with my region assistant superintendents, one of the things I talk about is we're not looking at things holistically. This is a very, like, narrow band. Do they accept, do they not accept? Do they stay, do they not stay? You know, are we hiring, are we not hiring? Do they, the question is, what's the, what is it in a, in almost a 4D? You know, what is their workload? What is their climate look like in their building? What is the, the performance evaluation of their supervisor and their principal look like? What's all of it look like together? And where are we losing people? That's why I said, we can't just look at, oh, who are we, what's retention by school? Who cares? I mean, not, not who cares, but we need to know the granularity of who is it, you know, under the mythological story that we're losing teachers. I, I don't think we are. I think maybe we're losing some, and I think we're losing some in certain job categories, at certain levels. Are they early teaching career? Are they mid-teaching? Are they later? Probably not later. I mean, but stop the guessing. Seven years ago, at a board retreat, for those who are here, I made the suggestion that to stem the tide, we should be looking at a way to compensate, rebate, or otherwise incentivize teachers to stay in Fairfax County who are going outside the county. That was roundly rejected by the previous board. I'm glad to see that my seven-year-old suggestion is maybe popular again. Going back finally to this Wallace Foundation, I'm gonna tell you, you can say, well, I went through some training program of the Wallace Foundation, however long ago, I don't care. You know, they only got into this quote-unquote "new initiative" of pipeline development in 2011. I haven't seen any data that comes out of it. I'm three years in on this, this, and it hasn't been an overwhelming success. We've had multiple failed principal searches, and much of their grants has focused on teaching, training, principal supervisors, so that the, that they are supervised accurately and provided proper PD. I don't know what they're doing with their grant money and who's beholden onto them, and the fact that the superintendent's association leader brought them to us doesn't inspire a lot of confidence. So I think we need to look at, if the principal pool isn't a resounding success, we aren't building the deep bench, that's our problem. Principal leadership and principal building in the long term is, is really our issue. And praxis cut scores, you want to have our best teachers up the praxis.
Okay. Dr. Brabran?
Well, oh my God, what is it? 8:50? I've had a cold. I will say, interestingly, Virginia has the highest cut rate for praxis in the entire country. So it'd be an interesting study to go back pre-post, talk about analysis, and we should do it. One thing that I appreciate with this board, this is our last work session together as a board, did we, we haven't even noted that, is there gonna be a, I don't know if a cake is coming out later, or music, a band?
[inaudible]
Part, no, I didn't bring a cake, and I don't know if Ryan's gonna be able to bail me out with something he, he brought. Strategic analysis will be the competitive advantage of school districts for the future, and you all are pushing us to have that strategic analysis lens. Have been since I arrived. I think we've done a lot better, but we have more to do. And here's what I'm confident of, this is Fairfax County Public Schools, we'll figure it out. And when we do, just like with Equity, which we've only started, I went down to VSBA, and I had school districts lining up begging to have what we have, what we produced. And I know, even on this, which is a little trickier, there's a lot of more moving parts, and there's national and state trends, we can figure this out, too. And we have the HR team, and the RAS team, and the principal team, and the senior team to do it.
Thank you, Dr. Brabran, and I'm confident we will figure it out. What my com, sorry, are you ready, push the button? My comments are geared toward how we do that and how we collaborate, because I know that, you know, sometimes we get this report once a year, or, and I think that we need to be having more frequent conversations.
Yeah, and one thing I want to remind folks that are returning, and really even everyone listening, we're gonna bring, I've talked with Mr. Smith, we're gonna bring revised indicators in the early spring, so that we're not all the way to the fall and going, "Oh my God, this report, we didn't change it." So we're gonna get clarity around that. I, I think how to enhance and take our strategic plan another level up, and have the board look at that early in 2020 to help us start planning for the fall.
Thank you. So, so what I would like to do is, I think I already mentioned my next step, so as part of that, I wanted the staff to know some of the things that I was thinking about, including in that discussion. And it actually piggybacks on some of Ms. Schultz's comments, and that is the extent to which we are ensuring that our employees feel as though the comments that they give, whether it's to the ombudsman, or whether it's answering a survey, that they actually have autonomy, that they're, there's confidentiality. There is this belief out there that somehow people can find who they are, and that hinders us getting the information, I think, that we really need to have. And so I'm, I'd like to look at varying types of support. I also like to look at Great Beginnings. There's a, when we looked at the numbers of people who participated in Great Beginnings, we did see a significant improvement in terms of retention and that sort of thing, but how can we expand that? I don't know that we can make people go, but what can we do? And I'd love to have some discussions regarding that. And also particularly those areas of retention, for example, special education, what supports are needed? What, you know, I hear a number of people come to me in the special education community trying to figure it out, and so I think that that's a discussion we need to continue to have. With respect to the numbers on the chart, these are overall numbers for the whole district, correct? And, you know, it's a little bit different when we look at African-Americans with respect to the total number of qualified as opposed to those offered. That's a much larger gap when we look at other categories, so that's another part of the discussion.
Just a point of clarification, when you say what supports are needed to support special ed teachers, do you, just in terms of at the school site, or what HR is doing for special ed teachers, or what principals are providing?
Well, for this, for this discussion, obviously, we're talking about HR. I understand there's another broader.
There's a, so we can talk more about the colleague assistance program, that's what you, the colleague assistance program that we already have in HR, where we deploy master teachers into the schools to work side by side with teachers who need support, first second year teachers, or a teacher that might be on an evaluation cycle.
And, and I'm not sure how this fits in with special services, but I, I do think there's a changing landscape out there, and part of us recognizing what is needed is recognizing those changes and supporting our new teachers with that changing landscape. So I don't know what that looks like, but I do think we need to have the discussion.
Okay, and I can, in the next follow-on, we'll make sure to clearly explain what the CAP program is, and how we work with the schools to support teachers, especially special ed teachers.
That's fine, but I can say, just based on conversations I've had even this week, whatever it is, we're, I think we need to think a little more broadly. Okay? Thank you. I think Ms. McLaughlin had one more comment.
So I just wanted to reemphasize what Ms. Schultz had brought up in a little bit, what Ms. Evans had said, and Dr. Brabran, I think you and maybe Mr. Smith use the term point-of-sale, you know, when you're trying to close the deal and hire people. Our job in, when we're doing recruiting, is to go with our biggest, our best sales pitch. So if the best sales pitch is, yes, it's $50,000 here, but it's $53,000 in Loudon, but you get to have an extra three days of your life back for work-life balance, and you're, whatever that number is, and you're gonna make $300,000 more over the course of your career, I mean, there are things we can do.
Total compensation.
So, yeah, and the total compensation piece. So I guess I want to just gently push back a little bit and say, don't underestimate the, the applicants, that all they're gonna see is just $53,000, $50,000, that's where I'm going. Our job is to say, why does this look different? And definitely survey and interview your first five-year teachers and find out, would you have, you know, found that getting this, this amount of money makes you want to come here more? I mean, there are just things we have to do from an informed conversation before we guess what attracts people to come here or not. And then the other thing is that I want to be really careful, the conversation we were having earlier about, as we divers, you know, we strive to diversify our workforce, to have it reflective of our Fairfax County diverse community, and people started making comments about whether this is an attractive place to live. We're extremely diverse. We're actually trying to have our workforce look like our very diverse community. So the notion that Fairfax County isn't inclusive enough, and that that's why our teaching workforce looks like it does, those were comments that were being made. I don't think that Fairfax County is not a place that doesn't attract diverse people to want to live here. I think it's just the challenge that, again, what we're hearing nationally about why people are going into teaching or not going into teaching. So I want to just emphasize those, those two things in particular. And then finally, again, when we look at over-representation, we are overrepresented in white females, we are underrepresented in our males. I mean, so there's, if we're trying to solve solutions, we've got to get to those populations and find out, is this a pipeline problem, or is there something more to it that is within our sphere of influence? I just can't echo that enough, because I feel like there's a lot of conversation about what more we can do, but you have to be able to do it within the pipeline that's coming to you.
So a couple of things I want to share. One thing we're gonna share with the new board, Mr. Smith and the team have created a strategic plan scorecard, one page with all the indicators, all the performance that you can see on our website. Get off the elevator, how are we doing? We need to do that for our HR piece and not just have the salary schedule, which has been the old way, year after year. We have a scorecard around our salary, our benefits, our EAP, that I think we can start to put together almost a scorecard package of all the things that we have and offer in our system, that other systems don't. And I also think one of the things we need to think about, we've always promoted ourselves as an excellent school system, as a big school system, but we're a global school system, and I think we've got to hit, you know, Ryan always talked about that, and I know we talked about responsibility to the community and global citizenship, but I think we need to attract, lots of people can want to teach in a school district, but we're a global school district, and how to say that that's a completely different experience and sets of experiences that people can get here that they could never get anywhere else teaching for a lifetime. And I think we need to, if you've been here a while, we have people who go to Korea and China and South America and get chances to work with national foundations, and I don't know that we've sold that, those sets of experiences and that sort of professional development at the scale that we could. So thank you, Ms. McLaughlin, for those points.
Well, just, I'm glad that, she said, never lived time on the table. Just about the page 16 in the narrative report, where the chart on the metric was our retention rates, and, I mean, ev, across every category, we were already at 94% and above, for teachers, administrators. That's an example of where that is not a metric we ever needed in there. We needed something more granular, more substantive.
We heard, we got it.
Okay. I don't have anyone else on my list, so I look.
If I may, just to close things out and maybe put a bow on everything tonight, I, I think we have an opportunity moving forward to take a look at the cycle with which we provide these reports to the board. We have an opportunity to look at our metrics, and we'll be bringing something to the board to think about those metrics and targets. And anytime we look at data, it's really about telling the story and what kind of story it does tell. And I think that what we can do differently, and I think that we may have the opportunity to do that, is to explain this very complex story of hiring, recruitment, and retention in Fairfax County. It takes a lot of people in the system. It takes all of our principals in our schools and administrators to make this happen. It takes our associations who are working with all of our teachers. It takes our teacher leaders in our buildings. It takes our RAS and our EPs. It takes... It takes everyone around this table and all of our unique departments and human resources. So there is a story there. And again, it's a very complex story. We have to figure out how we tell that story. Ms. Corbett Sanders, you asked for a plan. We'll be able to bring that plan to you because a lot of that plan is what we're currently doing as we think about how we're going to increase the diversity in our teacher candidates, as we think about the, the work that happens every day and the collaboration that we're improving upon with our, our RAS and our principals in our schools. So part of this is, and Ms. McLaughlin, you're right, to have data, data on a screen is just simply data on a screen. I think that if we can figure out what story we want to tell and then how best to tell that story, we'll have a much stronger reporting structure for this board, not only for premier workforce, but for all four areas of our strategic plan. And I'm a little partial to the plan. I've, I've been close to it for quite some time now. And I think that we can improve upon that and create not only just a document that, that we use to make decisions, but as a document to tell where we've been and where we're going to go in Fairfax County.
Thank you, Marty. I know you were trying to close the box, but it still cracked. We want to talk, Ms. Strauss has a comment, and then Ms. Hines and Ms. Corbett Sanders.
I just wanted to go back and give a little bit of background of why we made the decision in the 90s to do Wallace and to actually develop the programs that we did, that many of you benefited from. At that time, we were very concerned about the retirement of many of the educators in Fairfax County. And we had a group of very talented, very diverse administrators at the time, and they were approaching retirement age, particularly principals. And so the decision was we had to grow our own. We needed to train and attract and, and keep our own. And it worked, worked for a while, and then we cut everything. But some of the people who were actually teaching and lead were Ellen Lees, Brad Drager, Nancy Sprague. That was the generation who were teaching and developing, those of you who stood up today. But it was, again, to, to create a pipeline for talented leaders and administrators because all of a sudden, we had just done a study, very large percentage of, of administrators at the time were of retirement age, and they retired. And they were mostly women, a lot of African-American women. And they all left, and we had great people replacing them. So that was why we did it. We grew our own, trained our own, and we are still enjoying the results of that. And I think it was an excellent move and good decision.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. Ms. Hines?
Yeah, thank you. And I'm not going to untie your bow, Marty. Thank you for doing that. But I just wanted to respond a little bit. I want to make sure that I'm understood about the question of the role of one Fairfax and the role of the county in this. I think diversity does not equal inclusivity and integration. You can have what is considered a diverse community from the outside, but it can be not inclusive and not integrated. It can be quite segregated, in fact. And I don't think that's what people are looking for. I don't think they're looking for a community that's diverse but not integrated. And that is, that is work that the county has to do when it comes to housing. We have segregated housing in this county, and therefore, we have segregated schools. And I think people coming to this county to live and work want a better, want a better community than that. So that, that's my only point about that.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Yes, just briefly, Mr. Smith, I really appreciate you tying the bow and the importance of looking at from whence we come and where are we going and telling the story. But I'm a little worried about focusing on telling the story versus being nimble enough to address issues as they're happening. And one of the, and this is why I'm asking for a plan that has metrics and has the ability to then say, if we're not going at the speed that we think we should be going, then we have to be nimble enough to make tweaks and changes. And so I know that we're going to be making changes to the strategic plan as a result of a robust discussion with the new board. But I would also suggest that an excellent example of where we haven't been very nimble has been in the principal pool. And the fact that we've known for at least 18 months that the principal pool has not been working to the best of our, as well as we wanted it to. Because we don't have enough people, we continue to be, you know, robbing Peter to pay Paul with principal selection in certain areas. And so having a very intentful plan on how we're going to address that is going to be really important.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders. And I will just add, I'm glad to hear that people are traveling to learn about what's happening all over the world. I hope that the board will get an opportunity to hear what treasures were gathered as we try to figure out some of these problems. All right, we're ready for next steps. If everyone would just look at their, where their names are. Okay, Mr. Moon, are you okay with Ms., number 205?
Yeah, 206, 205 is okay.
205 is.
But 208 doesn't have to be there. Doesn't need to be there.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. Are you okay with that?
Yeah, but I have one that's missing.
Okay. Can we come to that at the end? I'll go all the way through. Mine is fine, 208, Ms. Corbett Sanders? And 209?
208's fine. 209 is provide details on how we are going to remake or revise the Skype part of the interview process for the principal pool. And a plan on how we can reach out to those who may have been dropped from the application process due to just the Skype interview. Not issue interview.
And I believe.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Ms. Schultz, I think you had another one that's not listed.
I did. I had regarding slide 18, that lists retention by school is under development, need to also include retention by job category and region. Oh, job category, level, school level, and region.
And if, Ms. Corbett Sanders, if you don't mind me adding to, I think it's 2008, well, maybe, if it makes sense.
I love partnering with you, so go ahead and add what you want.
Well, I, I guess we can figure out where best goes, but I was asking for an ongoing discussion, not just a coherent plan, but an ongoing discussion with this board with respect to how we're going to address the issues of the principal pool, addressing retention and fidelity in hiring. Are you more comfortable just adding it as another next step? Okay.
Whatever you feel comfortable with.
Let's just do, make it 211. Okay. Develop a plan to discuss improvements in, what did I say?
In recruitment, retention.
And ongoing discussions with the board. And when you go back up to retention recruitment, specifically addressing the concerns of the principal pool, just add principal pool as one of the categories, please. Principal pool and teachers. Thank you. And if that's okay with everyone, we will go back into closed session to celebrate some more.
So with that.
Hold on, let me, let me.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, for staying with us so late. I know we have, we were running a little bit late, and we very much appreciate all the hard work.
The board will now make a motion to go into closed meeting to, hold on a second, discuss and consider disciplinary and other matters concerning. I know, I was planning on it. Thank you. I figured that out. Okay. Let me start again. The board will now make a motion to go into closed meeting to, one, discuss and consider disciplinary and other matters concerning one or more students pursuant to section 2.23711A2. Excuse me, folks, I really can't speak over everybody, specifically to discuss and consider disciplinary and other matters concerning one or more students pursuant to section 2.23711A2 of the Code of Virginia. Consult with legal counsel regarding litigation or specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to section 2.23711A7 and AA of the Code of Virginia, specifically Title IX and other federal matters. Do I have a motion? Motion made by Mr. Moon, seconded by Ms. Evans. All those in favor? That is unanimous with all those at the table.